Okay, we'll come to order for many of the whole meeting of July 8th. Next is approval of agenda.
Resolved that the agenda for the July 8th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved as presented.
Mover and secondor please. Counselor Hans, Counselor Noble, all in favor? Motion carries. Next adopts in the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on June 24th, 2025 be adopted.
Mover and secondor please. Counselor Noble, Deputy Warden Ketchabah, all in favor? Motion carries. Any members' motions? Seeing none. Before we go into reports for members of the public, is there, please identify yourself if you'd like to speak to something and which item on the reports? Yep. Okay, which one? There's two items. Six, four. Thank you. Yes? Okay, which item? Which item? And that's six, five? Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Which one? Six, four, six, five? Both? Any others? Okay, and I'd like to, when we go through these reports, probably whoever comes up first, the second person coming up to speak, if, please don't be repetitive. If it's something sorry spoke to, but we got it the first time. Yeah, and also push the button to use the microphone. Okay, thank you. No others? We'll move down to first report, 6.1 Director Financial Services Treasurer, World Wide Area Network Services. Welcome, Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Through you to members of council. I'd like to introduce today our Manager of Information Technology, Mr. Jason Warren. He's going to be walking you through this report.
Thank you, and welcome. Jason's already helped me out with some technical issues with my stuff. We've already met, so thank you. It's still working.
Excellent to hear. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Through you to City Council. This report outlines a proposed contract extension with Eastlink for Internet and Wide Area Network Services. The current contract includes connectivity for the administrative building, the provincial offenses courthouse, and three long-term care homes. Before the current contract expired and prior to me starting in this role, staff proactively reached out to Eastlink to discuss a short-term extension to provide the new manager of IT time to review and determine a long-term sustainable solution to replace or enhance the current network design. This is in support of leveraging technology to enhance service delivery. Eastlink initially offered a one-year extension with 10% cost increase. They then offered a three-year extension of the current contract at no additional cost. As per the county's procurement policy, single-source procurement is permitted and staff recommend proceeding with the Eastlink extension as outlined. A new RFP process will be launched before the end of the three-year extension in 2028. It should be noted that there are no expected financial impacts as the cost of the extension is within the current budget allocation. A comparison was made to confirm that the current pricing is competitive compared to what others in the area with similar services are seeing. The staff recommendations are before you. At this time, I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions or concerns? I guess we need a resolution first.
Resolved that the contract for Wide Area Network Services be extended with Bragg Communications Incorporated, Eastlink, for a three-year period and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer Clerk be authorized to sign the contract extension and that a request for proposal be issued in 2028 for Wide Area Network Services.
Thank you. Mover and secondor please. Counselor Hans, Counselor Delie. Get your nose. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next, 6.2 Director of Legal Services Purchase of Decontamination Trailer. Welcome, Nick.
Good morning, Warden. Through you to council. This is a report that is seeking authorization for a non-competitive purchase of a specialized decontamination trailer for emergency management response. The background to this is in September, council endorsed the county submitting a grant, grant application to MNRF as part of a cooperative project with a number of other southwestern Ontario municipalities. And the purpose of that grant was to receive funding for both triage and decontamination trailers that would assist emergency response personnel in responding to gas well leaks. There are often hazardous materials that leak out of those like hydrogen sulfide. So this is related to responding to those. The reason this report's before you is ultimately the process for looking at suitable trailers was conducted by the County of Brandt, who coordinated it with the support of other cooperating municipalities. And ultimately, they determined that there's only one sole source, and so sole sourcing has to come before council if it's above $50,000. You can see, because I wrote this report, from the legal perspective, I went with the belt and suspenders approach, which is from the materials provided to us by the municipalities, I believe it is a sole source. But in the event that it is a single source, if it turns out there are other businesses that do this, then I've put in the rationale and authorization for both in the report. So our understanding is that there's only one maker who can guarantee the CSA compliance for these. But there had been some other American makers of trailers, and it's a little bit unclear whether the CSA compliance could be met. So that's the only sort of additional info in the report, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And sorry, it's probably important to point out, so the purchase will be funded completely by the grant that is coming in from MNRF, and that transfer payment agreement has already been executed with the province. So the funds are wholly provided by the province for this purchase. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nick. Resolution?
Resolved that the report titled Purchase of Decontamination Trailer from the Director of Legal Services dated July 8th, 2025 be received and filed and that staff be authorized to purchase one decontamination trailer to be used by local fire departments across Elgin County using grant funding provided by the Province Fund Ontario through the Legacy Oil and Gas Well Collaborative Action Plan and that the decontamination trailer be purchased from Canadian Safety Equipment in the amount of $136,000 plus HST through a simple source supply, which meets the required specific, single-source supply, which meets the required specifications of the project.
Thank you. Mover and secondor please. Counselor Whitner, Counselor Noble. Questions or comments? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Nick. Would this trailer be fully stocked, meaning the equipment involved or in place, or is this additional?
So my understanding is that the trailer's specifications are designed to meet the, so it'll be stocked with the functional elements of decontamination. Presumably, there are consumables used that will need replenished over time. I, I don't know a ton about decontamination, but presumably something sprays out or gets put on people that needs replaced at points.
Any other questions? Seeing no, Counselor Noble, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. Where will it be stored?
Go ahead.
Through you, Warden. So at this point, there's a couple of different options. We have space with the county's storage unit, white station to deal with storage. It's likely more suitable to arrange for one of the fire departments in the local area to have quicker access to it at a, at or nearby a fire hall. But there's also going to be an MOU entered into between all of the cooperating municipalities because the purpose of this being a joint project is that if there is a significant gas well response that's necessary, like the one that was in Wheatley and Chatham by way of example, that the municipalities would share in directing the trailers, provided they weren't needed somewhere else together. And so there, there may be arrangements that come out of that MOU, which is still being negotiated on where best to situate them for both local and regional response. So I don't have a firm answer. And I realize it's a long answer to a simple question, but that's sort of where it's at.
Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, follow the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, Nick. Next, 6.3 Director of Engineering Services Administration Building Cladding Window and Door Replacement. Welcome, Peter. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. As approved by council at their February 25th meeting, staff has issued a construction tender for pre-qualified contractors to rehabilitate the exterior of the county administration building. The project scope includes an overclad of the existing brick with aluminum composite panels, replacement of all the windows and exterior doors. There's an image, a rendered image on the top of the following page of the report that shows what the finished product is expected to look like. Fishburne Sheridan of London was contracted through an RFP process to complete the project engineering detailed design and will provide contract inspection services throughout the project. Bidders were pre-qualified to evaluate all potential bidders based on experience, references, and safety profile. The pre-qualification process received 13 responses, of which eight contractors were selected and invited to submit a bid for the tender. All eight pre-qualified tenders, uh, bidders, excuse me, submitted a bid. Alpenza General Contracting submitted the lowest bid at approximately $2.8 million exclusive of HST. In existing, in addition to this base tender amount, bidders were also requested to submit a price for three additional items. That will, that includes roller window shades, removal of the penthouse metal cladding. This is on the top of the fourth floor, to replace that with the aluminum composite panels to match the remainder of the building. And finally, to recoat the existing stucco that was part of the elevator project out front to ensure that that color matches the, the rendering that was shown on the previous page. The total cost of these additional items is $205,600. The total project cost is now forecasted to be approximately $3.15 million. The capital budget allocation had $5.3 million in there, and so we are expecting a project surplus of approximately $2.15 million. The construction tender did not specifically include a contingency amount. So we do expect that the final project cost to be slightly greater than what's presented here. However, there will still yield a significant project surplus. The investment has an anticipated 40-year design life to extend the service life of the administration building, and this will coincide with other recent investments such as the elevator and replacement and the HVAC system that has been recently completed. This also represents the lowest lifecycle cost solution in order to ensure that the 86-year-old facility continues to meet the county's needs. Staff, council, and tenants will be advised of the project and provided regular updates in, in advance of any facility access issues or temporary service disruptions. Work on the project is scheduled to begin in earnest this fall with an anticipated completion date of November 2026. I'd be pleased to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Go ahead.
Resolved that Elpeza General Contracting Incorporated be selected to complete the administration building cladding, window, and door replacement project, tender number 2525T27, at a total price of $2,790,000 exclusive of HST and that count, the county accepts the separate prices identified in the tender estimated at $205,600 exclusive of HST and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be directed and authorized to sign the contracts.
Mover and secondor. Counselor Whitner, secondor, Counselor Hans. Questions or comments? Counselor Crockett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a clarification question. Notice that the separate prices amount to $205,000, is that included in the $2.7 million?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Crockett. Yes, the total project cost includes those separate prices, and, and you'll see on the second page of the report, they're listed as well as the consulting, the, the cost to retain the consulting engineer. So they are included in the, in the total project costs. Does that answer your question?
Counselor Whitner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Peter. That's a good report, Peter, and thanks for presenting it. I'm just curious, with the windows, the energy efficiency, are they the top or the end of the line, or, and I was curious about the warranty we got provided with them.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Whitner. Their aluminum composite panel windows, their double glazed, they're a huge improvement over what we have currently. And I'll have to get back to you on the warranty that, that we've provided, that will be provided as part of the project.
Anything further? Call the vote. Oh, Counselor Crockett, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Whit. I'm just, again, another clarification. Can you shed any light on the reason why we had a budget allocation of 5.3 billion? And it came in really nicely at 2.8, so supposedly saving 2.1 million. That seems like a huge amount based on the budgetary estimate. How did that happen?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Crockett. Yes, staff had the exact same impression. You will notice that the eight bidders who did submit pricing, this was not an unbalanced bid, the lowest price. You'll, you'll see that the mean bid sort of resided around the $3.5 million range. So number one, we are comforted by the fact that the lowest bidder maybe didn't miss something in the tendering process, and it was very different from the other bids submitted. So everybody priced this relatively similarly, which, which gave us some comfort that this is the right market price for it. As far as how the budgetary number was developed, staff does not have the expertise with this type of activity, and therefore, we relied on our consultant Fishburne Sheridan of London. They were very conservative in their price estimate, obviously. And most of these firms reside, there are a few local firms, most of them reside in the greater GTA area. And I can only anticipate that other market activities created some competition here, and the contractors really wanted to come down here and do the work for us.
Okay, thank you. Bonus.
It is, it is a great number, that is for sure, compared to what we're look, looking at initially. Any further comments or questions? Seeing no further questions or comments, all in favor? Closed. Motion carries. Thank you, Peter. Moving down to 6.4 Director of Community and Cultural Services Response to Elmer Town Council's Letter of Intent Regarding Elmer Library Expansion. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to County Council. This report recommends that County Council seek further information from Elmer Town Council regarding the letter of intent to expand the Elmer Library at the Old Town Hall location. This is certainly a positive development, but we are not quite at the point where the town's resolutions can be considered such a letter. Specifically, we need further information on the proposed square footage of assignable library space that will result from this project. And we also need confirmation on the timeline associated with, with the construction. Should Town Council be able to provide this information, we will move this forward for your further consideration as a letter of intent under the library branch construction policy also attached to the report, and we'll do that at a future meeting. There are also other matters that require comment based on the town's initial resolutions, which I have outlined in the report. I won't go through each one of them. But particularly, we're not recommending that the county lead a fundraising committee. Those efforts should be led on behalf of the town for the reasons stated in the report. Other aspects of this report are, I would say intimately linked to the next report regarding our consultation process for relocation to the East Elgin community complex, so I will save comments on that for that report. But in summary, there may be some short-term accommodation needs for the library that will make the complex an option, even if an expansion at the Old Town Hall location proceeds. And so with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you, Brian. Resolution, please.
Resolved that correspondence titled Letter of Intent Town of Elmer, Elgin County Library Branch Construction Policy from the Town of Elmer dated May 22nd, 2025 be received and filed and that Elmer Town Council be requested to confirm the approximate size of the area to be designed for Elmer Library use in a future expansion to the Old Town Hall, along with a proposed date to commence construction at that location in order to be considered a letter of intent under the County of Elgin's Library Branch Construction Policy and that copies of this report be circulated to the councils of the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide.
Thank you. Mover and secondor please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Jiguer. Questions from council members? You want to speak? Okay, well, yep, I got them. Yeah. So, Mr. McKenzie, you want to come forward?
Thank you. Good morning, members of council and councillors. My name is Hugh McKenzie. I live in Elmer at 20 Pine Street East. I've attended previous Elgin County Council meetings. However, this is my first time wherein I speak. I wish to raise and discuss a number of issues raised by Mr. Michelli in his report to the Committee of the Whole dated July 8th, 2025. At the second paragraph of recommendations, Elmer Town Council is requested to confirm the approximate size of the area to be designated for the Elmer Library Expansion of the Old Town Hall premises, along with the proposed date on which construction would commence at that location, which would then comply with the requirements as a quote "letter of intent" per County of Elgin Library policy. And that copies of that letter of intent be circulated to the councils of the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide. This is, as I understand, standard procedure and will certainly be pursued in a timely manner by the Town of Elgin. Elmer, excuse me. In the introduction, Mr. Michelli recommends seeking further clarification from Elmer Town Council with respect to a letter of intent. I believe this proposal from the mayor of Elmer was a notice of intent, more than a formal letter of intent, per the county's policy. I am certain that with the ball now rolling, steps will be taken in a timely manner to move this matter forward. Background and discussion. Mr. Michelli sets out in the next steps, uh, sets out the next steps to be taken clearly, succinctly, and accurately, in my view. Responses from County Council Consideration, for County Council's Consideration. Line seven, I agree that time is of the essence with respect to the Town of Elmer taking expedited next steps to assess the feasibility, costs, and timelines for proposed projects. It is with respect to the next line that I disagree, and in fact, there appears a clear disconnect with Mr. Michelli where he states, "The town should continue to assess the feasibility, cost, and timelines of such a project as soon as possible, given County Council's current direction to explore relocation to the East Elgin County Complex." With respect, two different community meetings have been held on exactly that subject. The first was held at the Old Town Hall on April 7th, 2025, while the second was held on May 11th, 25, at the EEECC. I'd like to talk briefly about those two separate meetings. First, the Old Town Hall. This was sponsored by the Elmer Express and chaired by their senior representative, who managed exceptionally. Both floors of the building were open. Both floors were packed by standing-room-only crowds. Speakers simply walked up and spoke their preferences and reasons for those preferences. Extraordinarily, extraordinary competence and excellence on the part of the speakers throughout. The speakers, with only two exceptions, supported keeping the library function for the users and, and the library function for the uses of county persons wishing to use library facilities in the Town of Elmer in the Old Town Hall and expeditiously added to additional buildings in the Old Town Hall area. That proposal, that concept, was hardly endorsed by all in attendance. The prob, the proposal was and remains to this day for an 8,000-square-foot building to be built at the rear of the current Old Town Hall property kitty corner from the old original Carnegie Library building, built in 1911. The fact that a new term of Elmer Town Council will be a major issue during the municipal election, this is raised in Mr. Michelli's materials, in 2026 cannot be permitted to impact the commitment or timeline for a new build. The decision is and remains a decision that will be or ought to be made immediately, sooner rather than later, and committed to. With respect to the issue associated with availability of space during the term of construction, that is a question that requires an informed response. Generally, such a response is based on input from all affected parties, i.e. the contractors engaged, the Town of Elmer, Township of Malahide, County Council, and others within the community. This is a cooperative experience. With respect to the issue of requiring temporary library space elsewhere in the community while the project proceeds, this is a question based on whether the current library facility centered in the Old Town Hall can continue to function in the capable professional manner as it currently does during the construction. Only time will tell, and that decision will be greatly impacted by the contractors retained to perform the construction. I believe it's possible, based on the exceptionally talented and dedicated librarians who work in the library, that the current lease at, that the the current lease at the Old Town Hall ends on December 31st, 2027 should not be a factor in that equation. What the equation is focused on is the fair, reasonable, and timely delivery of, of a library and community-related services emanating from the library. The library function efficiently, and the efficiency of staff within the library is one of the foundations for its success. With respect to Mr. Michelli's quote "staff recommendation" that the library function be potentially relocated to the East Elgin community complex on some basis, I would submit that faculty, that that facility is absolutely ill-suited as accommodation for a library or library function, except perhaps on a temporary basis. Reasons for this conclusion were repeated by all the speakers at that forum held at the EEECC on May 11th, 2025, again, at which I attended with my wife. I spoke in opposition to that prospective venue on two separate occasions that evening, expressing numerous complaints and concerns with venue. My wife and I were two of the 56 in attendance. Of all the persons who spoke that evening from the floor, none supported that prospective move from the Old Town Hall to the EEECC, not one. I watched the room and saw no one sitting silently. I watched the room and saw no one sitting silently but expressing a different perspective or view. Page 19, as to the local municipal partner impact, it is submitted we can no longer wait in the dark. It is time to be bold to fisher cut bait. Two public forums, one overwhelmingly well intended and with few exceptions supportive of keeping the library function in the downtown and the other managed by Mr. Michelli and with speakers taking the position of the E E C C as a reasonable and appropriate long term solution. That had only 56 attendees, none of whom spoke in support of any move to the E E C C but for the presenters. Based on the responses of all speakers, attendees at the E E C Forum, it is respectfully my submission, the E E C C is not an appropriate facility to hold and manage a library function on a permanent basis. It could function as such for a short term period during construction should that requirement arise following discussion with contractors hired to perform the new library construction in the downtown location. Survey results. One of the issues I have with the contents of this page, this is from Mr. Michelli's materials, is the inclusion of survey results from outside the Elmer Township of Malahide area.
Sir, that's, that's the next report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Grant?
Given I said that I have comments on both sections.
Just, just the first section, 6.4 right now.
Okay. Okay, I'll try my best. So picking up on Mr. McKenzie's comments about the forums that occurred, both of which were dynamic events with a good amount of sharing of perspectives. I really want to start with Dave Mendel's comments because Dave, I think, as most of you know, is the former mayor of Malahide. Was he once the warden? I think he might have been. Yes. So you all know him, let's assume. So he was one of the early speakers and said it's high time the town made a decision. He believed the only choice, I'm reading directly from the Elmer Express, was an expansion to Old Town Hall. Preserve this beautiful building. He acknowledged that it would be not be cheap and he's and but quote, given that, that federal and provincial grants and increased lease revenue from the county would be in play, he predicted residents wouldn't have to endure a tax increase to cover its costs. This suggests the feasibility as Mayor Cookett goes forward, and we want to emphasize that. That in those of us who have looked carefully and as you know, in, in March, for crazy reasons, I did a 20 page report on feasibility. So using 14,000 as the invited participants for the survey, the response rate was about 1 to 2%. Not only is this very poor, but according to my brother who is a, has a doctorate in statistics, it is not deemed not significant. You really cannot base your decision making on it. Statistically insignificant is a quote from him. There was not appropriate community input in identifying the important questions. Most notably, Elmer had asked in January to have the county consider a downtown location. The county refused this. And not only that, but in putting forward, the survey gave survey participants no option to check that off as their preference. And in fact, when you walked into the library in Elmer, all you saw were these glossy wonderful drawings of the E E C C after renovations. So I think you really cannot put much weight in that aspect. In research circles, discussion surrounds surrounding research engagement survey tools talks about partnerships among stakeholders. I've already begun to suggest that there's a problem here among stakeholders. Communications and consultation have been severely limited. Elgin County has acted without partnering with the primary stakeholder, Elmer, insofar as this rejection of the downtown that's happened at least over the last six months has, has led to the problems in the consultation process. We should be collaborating. This is especially required since there is no library board in play. In Ontario, there are more than 1,250 public library boards. These are properly constituted groups. Appointed by city councils, the members of council in the case of a public library board must be one less than a majority of the board. Apparently, Elgin got something passed at the provincial level in the eighties that's led to this anomaly that you now are sitting as a public library board. So bottom line, the county council members must not hold a majority. So we do not have this. Now I have to jump. And, and that creates problems in the whole decision making process. A quote from the report relocating the Elmer branch of the Elgin County Library reveals there is slight support for such a move. I'm just noting that the report was dismissive of the meeting held by the Elmer Express where there was overwhelming support for the expansion to be downtown. People spent two hours at these two consultations. You had almost 200 people involved and yet it's not given much weight. Five minute survey, if that, is, it can't be what you rely upon. Again, I got to skip. Sorry about that. I am skipping something which I can't identify at the moment. So let's just go to the big picture. Historically, Elmer has not benefited much financially from being part of the county. I've done some research on this, spoken to people. I'm sorry, Mr. Ketchabah, Honorable Mr. Ketchabah. We have few roads and services covered while sending a huge portion of our tax base to the county. This act of dominance by the county is somewhat offensive.
Is this relevant to the discussion of this library?
Well, I think it is because this is the body making decision making, but I, okay, I will just skip. Think carefully in this period is what I ask. There's no rush to sign with the E E C C. It will remain an option. I don't know why one would be in a hurry. In the report, it refers to the county as being a willing partner. So Elmer can and will meet the terms and effectively fundraise. I'm saying let's do a great build to serve the citizens of Elmer and Malahide and work together towards that.
Thank you. Any further comments around the table? Counselor Cookett, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll try to be brief and to the point. First of all, I'd like to, I should have mentioned it during the communications, I'd like to thank Chris Mayhew for sending a letter in. Please read that letter. Chris was a former chief librarian or head librarian, not sure what the title was at Elmer, so do read that letter. Second, I'd like to thank the people that have come to support the, the, the concept of a downtown library. Because there are two reports, we kind of get muddled in which one we're talking to, so, you know, kind of try and separate. I'm going to try and separate, just talking about the letter of intent. So I want to thank Brian for this report. It's a fair report, well done. It covers the bases and certainly he's right. You know, the letter that we sent is not an official letter of intent. However, it was sent because we wanted to inform council while the process of the complex was taking place about what was happening in Elmer so that you had this information before we get to the point of an actual full letter of intent based on the, you know, based, based on, on the policy of the county. Let me begin by saying first of all, you know, the, we should have mentioned that in, in, in the motion that said that we are looking at an addition of 8,000 plus 3,081. It wasn't mentioned, but that's where we're going. So altogether is going to be 11,000. And, you know, in terms of a firm commitment, in terms of Elmer, in terms of a national plan, we have spent $250,000 on this already, a quarter of a million dollars. So there is a firm commitment on the, you know, on the side of, of Elmer Council. The kind of elephant in the room about this commitment was what happened in 2014. We got to the point where we actually had a really sound commitment and we had a tender that was there and all of a sudden it fell out. And so there's always this thing in the back of your head saying, well, maybe this will happen again. So maybe we need some kind of, you know, backup plan B. And I, I think Brian was trying to mention the, the, you know, the fact that the complex is a great kind of plan B. I don't think so, but you know, that's the point that he's making. The, the question about the timeline, I'm not sure. This is, maybe you write the question down because I'll go on about other things, but I'm not sure what is meant by a specific timeline. Do, do you want, do you, does the county want an actual tender date? Or do you want just a, an RFP that's gone out for it? I'm not sure what it's meant by a timeline because the last time we went through this, the county did accept a statement by Elmer that, you know, we are working on building a separate building and that was kind of accepted as part of the intent. So I'm not sure what you mean by what is, you know, what is the date that we have to give you? Is, you know, we're working here kind of on, on a catch 22 because part of, what, part of what Elmer is going to do in council is say, well, the, the county is still looking at, at the complex. We don't have any insurance that we're spending $5 million on a building that the county is actually going to lease it. And the county is saying, well, we aren't going to give you any insurances until, you know, you tell us exactly you built this building. So it's, you know, there's a bit of a catch 22 here. So I'd like to have some assurance of what it is exactly that the county is looking for in terms of timelines. It's mentioned about service interruption. I don't understand the concept that you're saying about service interruption for two years. I noticed the C A O gave a report at the Finance Committee which indicated some dates, and those are kind of thrown out as speculation, I think. Part of that speculation is that we're trying to push back the beginning of the building of the library for grant purposes because there are certain grants that we can get only before we start building. And there are certain grants we get after we start building. So I think part of the timeline that the C A O was given was purely speculative in terms of 2028. Personally, and I'm pushing for the fact that we are going to build this a lot sooner than that, which ties to the idea of, is the county ready to have the expense of moving to a temporary location at the complex for a few months or a year at most? Are you ready to do that and move back? I'm not sure. I'd rather see the money that you spend on that given to, to Elmer as a grant. But anyway, I, I don't think you'll need to move out because there's lots of, there's, I don't think there's really any reason to, to move out. It'll get noisy for a while when they build the building, but I don't see the, the reason to move out anyway. I won't dwell on that very much. Partnerships, the last point I want to make. And I think the most important one, you know, we really have talked, Brian and I have talked a lot. There has been consultation and we have talked about partnerships. And I think the partnerships yet to be fully tested in terms of this because what we are looking at in Elmer is not just a building that holds a library. We are looking at a building that forms a partnership with other, you know, with, with other businesses in town, other, other organizations in town. We would like this building to be part of something that supports the Elmer Performing Arts Council. We'd like this building to be part of something that is something that ties into the Old Town Hall and makes it a place to go. There's a lot of stuff that's been talked about driving, you know, we all drive to the library. Of course you do. Most people drive to the library, but the question you should ask is not driving. The question is asking, driving where? Where, you know, what's the important part of driving? You're driving downtown, but, you know, I digress. Anyway, let's go back to partnership. I would like to state briefly that this whole process began with the board of the East Elgin Community Complex asking us to talk to Brian about county use of the complex. It did not mention the library in the original resolution. And of course, when we talked to Brian, it quickly went to the library use, and that's fine. But I'm, I'd like to believe that when we're talking about partnerships, that the Township of Malahide would not deliberately go against the wishes of the Council of Elmer when it comes to the bottom line. And that, you know, that could happen in a vote at the board. But we have to realize that even though we think that at the board, at the complex board, that we are wearing a complex hat, we're really also wearing, you know, our own municipal hat. I go back, I, I don't, I'd like to believe that the Township of Malahide would not vote against something that Township of Elmer is against. So, and the same thing with the county. The county has the right. You have the right to put the library anywhere you want and you state that every chance you get, saying you do. Yeah, you do have that right. But when we talk about partnerships, we talk about more than having a legal right to do something. We talk about, you know, accommodating the, our, our local municipalities. And I'd also like to believe that the county would not go against something that the Town of Elmer was in favor of. So anyway, when we talk about partnerships, let's remember that, you know, that we are dealing here with people and not just legal entities that you have resolutions for, that you have policies for. So Elmer, we're going to do this. I just think that we're, you know, the complex is muddling things through and, and as is stated in the, in the next report, the complex has really never asked, the board of the complex has really never asked the county to put a library there. So, you know, to go forward, the, the complex has to do that, and I sincerely hope they don't because as I mentioned, if the complex board votes in favor of putting a library there, they are deliberately going against the wishes of the Town of Elmer. And so anyway, thank you very much for that report, Brian. You covered all the bases and you'll get a letter of intent as soon as I figure out what exact date you're talking about in terms of construction.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Warden. You know, on that point regarding timelines, I mean, it does need to be made into the next step of a formal commitment, often through presentation of a design concept and a commitment to tendering, moving the project forward, that based on past precedent of, of how we've moved projects forward. So, you know, you're not, not at that point as we have indicated in the, in the report. But the, you know, the commitment, the commitment to building and I, you know, the, the two reports are intimately linked, but on this particular matter, I mean, this council has shown over many, many years of being a willing partner with our municipalities and in accommodating library premises that you lead. And, you know, I'd like to hope that that's not going to be any different as we go forward if, if Elmer was to make a firm proposal and then a commitment to building, that this council is going to be a willing partner, but you need to see that commitment. And the past is certainly relevant in in terms of that commitment. So I think we, you know, we need to see that more formal commitment regarding a design. You know, because they're off the design come operational impacts, right, that we would also need to discuss with you. And then, you know, that that commitment to actually moving ahead and building.
Go ahead.
Mr. Warden, could I, you know, just clarification, Brian, they're talking about the commitment is the design. And like, like if Town of Elmer shows you design within the next two months, is that sufficient? Put you on the spot.
Certainly, we would take in, Mr. Warden, through you to Councilor Cookett, we would take in that information and bring this back to County Council as to what the next steps are going to be as to what, you know, how far does this go in terms of meeting a letter of intent and regarding timelines associated with implementing the project? So, you know, we we got to continue to walk forward. Again, though, you know, in both reports, the the timeline we have associated with the current lease is obviously very relevant in this discussion and wanting to bring some clarity and stability to our operations going forward. So it time is becoming of of the essence on this and I'm glad to hear that, you know, you're you're going to make this some, you know, a more urgent matter for Town Council to consider, but we're not at the point today where we can say this fits the letter of intent and County Council can say, yes, we're we're endorsing this project. If it goes ahead, we're definitely going to lease this facility. And in the meantime, you also have other options. And as, you know, was alluded to that you as you can make that decision regarding our leasing instability of that lease beyond two thousand and twenty-seven. So, you know, today is not the day where we can answer all those questions, but I hopefully at least have given you some more information as to what, you know, what further clarity is required to move forward.
But just to follow up, Mr. Mr. Warden, still not clear, right, on on the time factor you're saying. If I give you a a design that had been approved by Town Council, you still need something else. You're going to bring the design back to County Council to to approve. But we could give you a design and and also the architects that are going to be doing this. Because to get to the point of an actual date to start the building, we would have to have an RFP and an RFP returned and all that kind of stuff on that. A little ways down the line, maybe not a lot, but a little ways down the line. So I'm fully ready to to provide a design as soon as possible along with an architect to do that design. If that's efficient, that's great.
That would be up to County Council at that point. Based on what we have to look at. I guess I do have one comment. Being in the construction industry my entire working career and in working on many reservations renovations regarding old buildings and and integrating with new, I don't see how it's even possible to keep the library open. Like you're looking at integrating flooring from a new to old painting, woodwork, and if you even think that you can seal it off to keep dust out, you can't. It's it's physically impossible. And with breathing problems, health issues, dust in computers, I don't see how that can work. But that's just what I, my professional opinion of what I've seen over the years is, anyway, just a comment. Counselors Gare.
Just on that note, I'm thinking of the Terrace Lodge project where we managed to do a three-phase projects without moving the residents out and essentially closing Terrace Lodge and having temporary location for the residents of Terrace Lodge and then moving them back in. So I completely agree and I'm sure folks involved with the Terrace Lodge would have witnessed that it is extremely challenging. But I think it will be interesting to compare costs in terms of managing, yeah, construction while sustaining some operations. So based on that experience, I would not rule it out.
But based on my experience, you will have to impede and encroach on the existing library and reduce the already small size of it. Because we did have to add a terrace lodge. We had to move people out and find different accommodation for them during certain periods of construction. So it's an already already small floor space and you are going to reduce it by probably a third at least. Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just just to clarify the the design of connecting to the Old Town Hall, there will be no extra openings in the design that we're looking at to the Old Town Hall. So that there won't be any of the stuff that you're talking about in terms of, you know, the the problem with it. The existing openings are the ones that are going to be used for connections there. So so you don't kind of make the decision ahead of time before you see the design. When you see the design, I think you'll understand that these problems aren't really problems. But anyway, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? We have a resolution. Yep, go ahead, breathe again.
Resolves that the correspondence titled Letter of Intent, Town of Elmer, Elgin County Library Branch Construction Policy from the Town of Elmer dated May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five be received and filed and that Elmer Town Council be requested to confirm the approximate size of the area to be designated for Elmer Library use in a future expansion to the Old Town Hall, along with a proposed date to commence construction at that location in order to be considered a letter of intent under the County of Elgin's Library Branch Construction Policy and that copies of this report be circulated to the councils of the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide.
For the resolution. Yeah, it's been duly moved and seconded. Yep. Call the vote, all in favor. Opposed, one opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brian. And on to your second report. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden and through you to County Council. I'm I'm pleased to introduce the team that was associated with this consultation process. So we have with us today Natalie Marlowe, who is our manager of library services, Shanine Steele, our digital services librarian, Delene Van Zill, who is our our Elmer supervisor. As well, Catherine joined us for the the work that was done on the consultation framework. Jessica Silkox in our communications department. So very much was a team effort. I'm going to lead us off in this report and presentation and will then turn it over to Shanine for a deeper dive into our survey results. And I will then conclude our presentation on this matter and address the recommendations in the report before you. So if you go to the next slide. So based on the direction we received from County Council on March eleventh, we engaged in a comprehensive community consultation process to explore support for the potential relocation of the Elmer branch of the Elgin County Library to the East Elgin Community Complex. Our efforts were well advertised in the Elmer Express and through online advertisements, such as through the county's social media channels. Next slide. This process started with a presentation and public meeting at the complex, which was held on May sixth. Fifty-six people attended this meeting in addition to staff, including County Counselors Cookett, Shiger and Widner, and I thank you for coming. Also members from Elmer and Malahide councils. Now, it is fair to say, and as you heard from the comments earlier, that there was vocal opposition expressed. And there were a number of pointed questions about the move, which we we did our best to address. And you can see the at least the public presentation portion of this presentation on the Engage Elgin site. Next slide. And regarding Engage Elgin, we set up a comprehensive portal through the tool, which included F A Qs, details in on the process and of course, access to our survey on potential relocation. There were a total of twelve hundred visits to the site while it was live. We can assure County Council that a pro that our process was well advertised and marketed through posters in our libraries, communications, for instance, through the Elmer Area Chamber of Commerce and ads in the Elmer Express, targeted ads through the county's social media channels. And again, I want to acknowledge the larger efforts of our communications team in in leading those efforts. All right, next slide. We particularly targeted Facebook for our online engagement and you can see the results we we achieved, including over sixty-seven thousand views on the on this process. So here are the results we achieved for our survey, a total of two hundred and twenty-four responses, which is a good response relative to the other surveys that county the county has done and represents one of the highest levels of engagement we have achieved through the Engage Elgin site. So I'm now going to turn it over to Shanine for a deeper dive into the results. And I really again have to thank her for her superior work in analyzing the results as there was a lot of data to consider and consolidation of that data in order to bring this these slides to you today. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Shanine.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Mr. Warden, through you to County Council. So as Brian mentioned, he's asked me to quickly walk you through the survey results as I did spend a long time with the data. Along with some of our team, we combined the paper survey results that were available at all ten of our branches into the same database so that we could easier analyze all of the results. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as Brian mentioned, staff were directed to ask for public opinion on moving the Elmer Library to the East Elgin Community Complex. So moving right into the first question we asked on the survey of the two hundred and twenty-four survey respondents, one hundred and eighteen or fifty-two point seven percent indicated that they supported moving to the East Elgin Community Complex. One hundred and six or forty-seven point three percent indicated that they did not support moving to the complex. If respondents selected no, they were then directed to a comment box in the online survey that allowed them to provide suggestions before being taken to the next question. Those responses are not included in these slides because there was almost one hundred of them. I didn't think that was the best use of our time this morning. They're all available in the full copy of the responses that is linked in the council report for your interest. In the following slides, we'll take a look at those respondents who answered, yes, I support moving to the Elmer Library, moving the Elmer Library, my apologies, versus those who answered no. Each respondent was required to provide demographic information, including where they live. As you will notice, there are a few respondents to the survey who live in St. Thomas, two individuals who live entirely outside of Elgin County and the city of St. Thomas. Within the municipalities, there is not a lot in it, yes versus no. Of those who identified as living in Elmer, fifty-three percent said they do not support the move, so slightly more people opposed. And of those from Malahide, fifty-five percent indicated their support in favor of the move. So slightly more in favor, in favor. Next slide, please. Thank you. Age of respondents shows slightly more of a divide with sixty-two percent of respondents between the ages of twenty-five and fifty-four in support of moving, whereas the opposite is true for those fifty-five percent and older with sixty percent of response in that age bracket indicating they are not in favor of moving the library to the complex. We also asked the respondents, if the respondents have children under eighteen years old who use the library, to see if library users with children felt one way or another. One hundred and nine of the two hundred and twenty-four respondents indicated that they did have children and fifty-six percent of those supported the idea of moving to the complex. Interestingly, how often respondents use the Elmer Library did not really influence overall opinion. Self-identified weekly users were fifty-four percent in support, opposed to forty-three percent of self-identified monthly users. The loan period for most of Elgin County Library's collection is four weeks. So weekly and monthly users can be considered regular users of the library. To note here, other indicates that survey respondents identified that they use another Elgin County Library branch more often rather than the Elmer Library. Also of note is ten people who completed the survey identified as having never visited the Elmer Library and nineteen people said they hadn't visited in the last year. We asked respondents how they get to the Elmer Library, both in the online survey through Engage Elgin and in person in the weeks leading up to the online survey being ready to go. Of the two hundred and twenty-four online survey respondents, sixty-six percent drove and thirty-four percent walked. The in-branch survey collected answers from one thousand five hundred and fifty-three people from April tenth to May fifth and could be assumed to be a more accurate representation of users of the Elmer Library as the data was collected from people who were actually visiting the Elmer Library. One thousand two hundred and sixty or eighty-one percent of people who visited the Elmer Library between April tenth and May fifth drove and only nineteen percent or two hundred and ninety-three people in that time walked. We use this survey as an opportunity to gather some information about the kind of services respondents accessed at the Elmer Library and also identify some of the gaps as our users see them. Respondents were able to check off as many of these service areas as they wanted to. We asked which, if any, of these services survey participants accessed when they visited the Elmer Library in the last year. On this graph, I want to point out that forty-five people reported that they visited the library looking for meeting space or study space, which the Elmer Library currently doesn't have room for, but is a recurring request that staff have. And eight people visited the library hoping to connect with social services, which is another service that Elmer Library doesn't currently have space to accommodate. I would also like to point out that nineteen people who responded to the survey self-identified as not using any library services. One of the options for this question was the service I was looking for wasn't there, which if chosen, gave respondents the opportunity to expand upon and tell us more. I won't bother to read them all out for you. They're up there and you also have access to this slide deck in your council package and then also linked in the full set of data. I'm going to turn it back over to Brian now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So before we do open it up for questions and comments, I would like to return to some of the aspects of the report before you. So we're recommending that County Council continue the process of relocation of our Elmer branch to the East Elgin Community Complex based on the results of this consultation process. Where but we are now at a point where we can no longer assume that this real relocation is possible and feasible. All we have so far from the East Elgin Community Complex, as Counselor Cookett has alluded to, is a letter expressing interest in this potential relocation. We now have to move this to the next step of confirming this interest, including matters such as the amount of assignable space that they would be willing to make available in order to satisfy County Council's endorsed space needs for the branch of at least ten thousand square feet, plus the additional considerations that were outlined in that previous endorsement. So we're we're seeking your approval to move discussions to this next step. First, starting with that confirmation from the board and then moving to further discussions about the details of a future lease. We recognize that County Council has two options now before you, one from the town, which still requires further development and commitments before proceeding and likely one from the complex. As our previous leasing and space analysis endorsed by this council pointed out, this decision is ultimately yours and yours alone to make as both options would satisfy the identified space needs. You are the leasing authority for the library on our branches. And there could be short, medium and long-term solutions in merging that speak to the need to relocate the branch beyond December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven, when our current lease expires. Because even if a downtown build were to proceed on the on on timelines when they're presented, we're going to need stable premises from which to operate in that discussion you you were having regarding the level of construction that could take place around it until we get those further details. But there will be an impact and we need to really seriously consider that. So we're recommending that we approach the board of management of the complex to get, first of all, a the commitment to moving ahead with further discussions. Then the length of the lease that could be associated with that will obviously be the subject of a future report based on on that. And we recognize that that too also impacts the level of capital renovations that the Board of Management of the complex may be willing to make if it's not a long-term commitment. And that is certainly a factor in these discussions as well because again, is within your authority to make the long-term commitment as well as as this matter proceeds. So which is why, you know, the next step is getting that commitment from from the Board of Management of the complex as soon as possible. So with that, no, we're we're happy to answer any further questions that council may have.
Thank you, Brian. The resolution, please.
Resolves that the report titled Analysis of Consultation Process on the Relocation of Elmer Library to East Elgin Community Complex from the Director of Community and Cultural Services dated July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five be received and filed and that Elgin County Council request a commitment as soon as feasible from the from the Board of Management of the East Elgin Community Complex to accommodate the Elmer Branch of the Elgin County Library based on County Council's identified space needs to take effect as soon as January first, two thousand and twenty eight. And that County Council engage in further discussions with the Board of Management of the East Elgin Community Complex should such a commitment be received on matters such as capital renovations and a leasing agreement to accommodate the Elmer Branch of the Elgin County Library. And that copies of this report be circulated to the councils of the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide.
Thank you. Mover and secretary, please. Counselor Jiguer, Counselor Widner. I'll open up to the floor Ms. Nesmet. You want to speak?
Thank you. So I just had a question about the possibility of creating a new view for this for the surveys. And I did do your chat line and they gave me your name as the contact, so I thought I would just ask here. And I'm not sure how relevant the the survey will be to the decision making here, given that at that time we didn't have the option of the Elmer build to to vote on in comparison to the move to the ECC, which would have made it more relevant had that been there. But my question is about, could we have a view that is just the local active users separate so that if you are using it to make your decision, you see what Elmer Malahide Active Lab Library users are saying? Because ten percent were not from Elmer Malahide and of those eighty one percent were in favor of the move. And they are not financially impacted by their taxes. They don't live in the community and they certainly aren't walking. So I think that clouds the the output. And forty percent used it six months or less per year. And they also don't reflect what the everyday average user cares about. And so I think it's important that their voice is separate. I think this is easy. Or you could give us the Excel and we could just run some some data ourselves. But I think the voice of the local active users would be relevant if you're reviewing that as part of your decision.
Good, Brian.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Warden, to respond to the question, I mean, this is something the lens we put on this from the start, and that is actually all county users use all county are entitled to use all county branches and have a say in how those branches are used. And we deploy our services so that they benefit all county users. So I, you know, when when we're crafting a survey, we 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 can't discount. You know, a user in Springfield that uses the Elmer Library or a user that comes from from Port Stanley to use the library. So I mean, we didn't, we didn't siphon the data to to reflect only users within the branch because our county system is based on ten branches operating as one system.
Go ahead.
I I agree with including all the people in the survey. I would just like that to be an additional view so that the Elmer and Malahide in particular can look at what their constituents said because it is our taxes. It is it is impacting us more than people from outside. It's an easy. I mean, if you just send the data, it's it's easy to just create the view just as an extra piece of relevant data.
Yeah, I think it was warned. Yeah, I'm told the data is available if they want to run that analysis.
My apologies. Not the Excel version, because if I was to make an Excel version available to the public, then that data could be changed. But there is a PDF version available on the county website. I I mean, you could
Could you just do it in Excel or do it for me and just create that? And if I can't?
I can give you my contact information and we can chat.
Yeah, I did want to remind, there is space in the second floor if there needs during that renovation period. That upper floor has open space that could also help be used for that transition.
Hey, Ms. Grant.
Thank you. There's talk among researchers about community engagement survey validity. And I think that some of the questions that Sandra raised were really good at pointing to some of the problems here. She used the verb cloud. I would say that some of it distorts it. But I'm going to go back to this whole problem of the response rate really is only capturing one to two percent of the pool of people, which is fourteen thousand, or it's even bigger if you're counting all of Elgin. So this notion that it was advertised well. Well, we didn't get the response rate we needed to have something that you can rely on for decision making. Was there consultation done in the language that is number two in our area of the county and that's in I can't pronounce it, something like Klaus Deutsch, but it's low German. Thank you. I hope you got that for the records. So that's something to consider as well in terms of the population. Our understanding, for instance, of the Mennonite population, which would not by and large fill out a survey that's online. I realize there were paper versions is that they would more readily use the downtown location for safety reasons. And again, a reminder, safety is a big consideration here. One of the Elmer counselors said the the prime reason that he that tips his vote is that his own son would no longer be able to go to the library on his own if it were relocated to the ECC because it's just plain too dangerous. A citizen who's greatly respected Kathleen Tribe spoke of the danger to seniors that that intersection is already fraught because of the heavy hockey users come traffic flow. And she felt that it was an accident in the waiting. So and these things, you know, you may say, well, that's not relevant to the survey. But it is relevant because you're having to make a choice here on locations. Did here's another question. How did they establish the legitimacy of the respondents? Both their years and their location, et cetera. Not really. I know that email addresses were used. And that frustrated at least one person here who wasn't able to fill it out at all. And someone else's grandchildren couldn't fill it out because they don't have emails. So I guess I'd just like to say that no sociologist or urban planner would see this as a set of valid results which should justify the basis for decision making. I'm very concerned that there's a recommendation here to hurry into the ECC thereby denying Mayor Cookett the time that we thought only a few moments ago would be given for him to submit the proper documentation. We should ensure that there's meaningful inclusive practices that result in tangential tangible benefits for the community. That letter that was submitted indicated that the BIA supports the downtown location. We are concerned and they are concerned about the hollowing out of the downtown. An urban phenomenon that you'll see with all kinds of boarded up storefronts in other communities. We don't want to shift the energy out of the downtown. And the fact that I I think I possibly should leave it there. But I'm very concerned that a lot of this analysis of data is going to suggest that this is a basis for decision making. I mean, if nothing else, realize that for all statisticians, they'll say on the one hand, this, on the other hand, that you can use statistics to make your arguments by how you interpret them, how you frame the questions. The the my primary problem was no option was there for people to say if you're going to expand, expand downtown. And that was what the response was at the two forums I attended. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess from my perspective of twenty two years on councils and and these type of surveys, this is the norm for surveys with in municipal government. That's if you get past two percent, you're lucky because that's just the reality of it. It doesn't matter what you do. That's how you proceed. That's you can put notices in every store. You can do whatever you want to do, but that is the reality. Two percent, you're lucky. That's just my the reality of the situation. A lot of times, point five percent. Anyway, comments from council members, questions to Brian, Deputy Warden? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Question for Brian. Brian, the recommendation as written does not commit County Council to any faction at this point. It's moving the yardsticks ahead, correct? Through you, Mr. Warden, to the Deputy Warden. That is correct.
Counselor Goofy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. First of all, I want to thank Brian for the report and his department. I really should say Director of Community and Cultural Services, but Brian's a lot shorter, something, you know. Good report. I'm not going to argue about the survey or anything in it. Just a couple of points. First of all, we've had a lot of discussions so far on something that County Council really does not have a formal request to do from the board that started this in the first place. So you know, I think the right way to go is, I guess, ask the board, although I'm against that and I'm certainly won't vote for this resolution, even though it's well done. But, you know, we've discussed stuff that isn't formally on the table, really, in terms of somebody really requesting it. Secondly, I point out the original, the original request. Something to think about was the original request based on increased service for the library. Or was it based upon getting increased money for, you know, the complex and certainly the complex needs increase increase money and a conceived board voting for that. But you know, the the reason we're here is for increased service from the library. And I go to insist because I think that the only place you're going to get that is downtown. But anyway, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. In the initial steps of this, when the complex board came to us with that initial letter, it was based on an understanding that we are underserviced. And that the three thousand and eighty one square feet that we've been operating in for well, we're almost forty for four over forty years, but also in terms of identified space needs for over twenty and finally saying we need action on this on this matter. And the status quo, again, we've said this before, the status quo is not an option. What we don't want to lead this council into is a path towards the status quo. Okay, so so you know, that's that's really where the discussion started and out of which then the service needs evolve. But I just want to keep put that reminder out there again that we're committed as staff to trying to resolve the service needs based on the fact that it is very becoming very difficult to provide the level of service that a growing community needs in three thousand and eighty one square feet.
Counselor Goofy.
I don't really want to continue the debate about location at this point rather than anyway. The board really has not asked for if the county library to go there. That's just the point I'm making.
Counselor Double, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. This motion that we're looking to vote on right now, does it leave Elmer the opportunity to answer the question from the motion previous?
No, it does not. This this current motion is just for us to proceed to a discussion with the East Elgin Community Complex. So so your question is it doesn't preclude Elmer from answering the question from the previous motion?
Correct.
No, it does not.
Okay, so we can.
Is there any further discussion or question? Counselor Widner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I just want to respond to some of the comments I've heard about safety in the area. I'm told it's going to be so dangerous to move it to the complex. Years ago, I was told Sid and Ham and John was one of the most dangerous intersections in town. And personally, I can attest to the fact I was hit there so hard that I took my full-size pickup and spun it around one hundred and eighty degrees and put it on the sidewalk. If there'd have been any children there, they'd be all dead. And there was lifelong injury implications from that. So that's something should just be looked at and also parking. A lot of times you can't even park in a municipal parking lot because there's no room. So if you're going to increase the library size, where is everybody going to park? Just to bring those comments up, but there's a safety concern in that corner, in my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Jiguer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. So a couple of things. I just want to caution everybody about applying scientific research standard and statistical significance when we're talking about public opinion. And in fact, like, who is the population? So typically, you wouldn't use the resident population. You would use the users and all of that. So basically, I also want to remind everybody, I think you can trust council that when we make decisions, we use multiple sources of information. And that's why we have staff reports. We have public opinions. All of them are, you know, provide one view and are imperfect in and of themselves, but it is our job then to take all of it in. So want to put that out there. And also, the if there was any reference to implied bias from staff, we have to go back to the question. So council directed staff to specifically ask, what do you think of the ECC? So they did their job and that's why the question was was phrased that way. So so it is one good source of information and council will will consider that in continued deliberations. That my read on the the results, if you add like a typical five percent at least margin of error, really what we have is a population that is split. And the way you we should read that, in my opinion, is that means that our residents just want better service. That the current service level is not appropriate. I think there's unanimous agreement on that. So we just need to move on and find a better solution. I agree with earlier comments that I trust that all partners will focus not on their own interests, but on the interests of the users. And so that's my advice to each of the lower-tier municipality. That's my advice to the Board of Management. And my advice to my colleagues here, let's keep in mind what is best for the end user. Ultimately, a lot has transpired. A lot of work has been done since this initial discussion, which I think an initial resolution dates back to last December. The Board of Management of the ECC has not received any of this yet. And so the board has been waiting for analysis for Elmer to do what they wanted to do for staff to in the county to do what they needed to do. So my recommendation is that there's a lot to digest for the board. So I personally would not support the resolution as it is written. I would say that this, all the information, like a summary of everything that has happened since the initial request, needs to go back to the Board of Management of the ECC and be received for information so that the board has a chance to request other reports if the board wants and and like I said, process all of it. And hopefully continue to focus on what is the best for the end users and our residents.
Comment, Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Counselor Jiguer. The one thing that we do need is clarity. I think that, you know, it may be you know, there are operational details here, but if if the Board of Management is not now interested in accommodating the branch, the process ends. Right? So we we need to know is that door open before we spend, you know, any more time and effort in into this proposal. So Then the clock starts to tick on this matter. So I think, you know, that's why we crafted the recommendation to say like, still are, you know. I don't think there's a lot of mystery to hear what, as, as to what, what we're trying to do. And, and how much space and we don't, on our level, don't have access to, you know, what space configurations could be. What, what space could be freed up in this proposal, but we got it. We got to keep as, as was used by the Deputy Warden, the yardstick moving forward here. And this is just the next step in moving the yardstick forward. But if the answer is no, sorry, we've now, you know, changed our mind or. Businesses changed at the complex to say we don't want to now offer the space. Then, 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 you know, we're, we're moving on, right? So we, we just want to keep moving the process forward. And then we can provide the level of detail. My other thing is that this will go forward to county council for endorsement on, in August. Right? So the, the letter's not being issued is, is my understanding today. So we got that consideration in mind, which kicks into September and, and on it goes. So I'm just, just putting that reality out there.
So I, uh, is there any other questions or comments? I got, uh, before I ask Counselor Jagar if she wants to change the wording of the. Resolution. Go ahead, Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just through to Brian for clarification. As far as lease term, is there a minimum, maximum term? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Widner. I mean, I'm only drawing upon the, the standard municipal lease that we have now in place with. Uh, all, all our partners that have the five-year terms associated with them that all our branches are currently operating under. Um, if there wasn't a, a, you know, if we were to, to stray from that, then that would be something that county council would have to approve. Specifically, we had that situation in Elmer where we did approve a one-year lease in the current premise and the understanding then that the. Um, uh, standard municipal lease would take effect. Um, so there, there is always that possibility, but generally speaking, we're talking about five-year terms.
Any further questions? See Counselor Jagar's writing.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. So I'm wondering if the resolution could be amended or to simply that staff. Uh, send the results of the exploration because they were asked, the, the board had asked for an exploration, send the results of the exploration of the E C C. Um, as a potential. Location for the library. For the board management's consideration. I think we're going to get there either way. Um, I've. I think as county council. That's probably, to me, that would be a more neutral position that to say you've asked us. We've been asked to explore. We've explored. Here are the results. And then go to the Board of Management and say. What do you think? As opposed to asking for a commitment. I think we'll get either way. So I'm not that picky. If we go with this, we'll get there anyway.
So, so can we just add that into the third paragraph? Fourth paragraph?
I'm hesitant to use the request a commitment.
Yeah, okay.
Would be present the results and um, ask the boards to consider the results.
Yeah, okay. All right. You've got something, Catherine? I guess, uh, Counselor Widner, I have to ask if that's, once, once Catherine reads, if that's okay with you as well, since you're a seconder.
Uh, so essentially it would be the first section of the resolution would remain the same, uh, resolving that. Uh, a title, the report uh, titled Analysis of Consultation Process on the Relocation of the Elmer Library to the East Elgin Community Complex. From the Director of Community and Cultural Services dated July eighth, twenty twenty-five be received and filed. And the second part would be, and that staff present the results of the exploration of the move of the Elmer location of the Elgin County. Branch, library branch to the East Elgin Community Complex to the Board of Management of the East Elgin Community Complex for consideration. And that copies of this report be circulated to the councils of the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide. So if we wanted to do an amendment, um, we would either have to uh, vote to defeat the original or the mover and seconder could withdraw. And you are the mover and Counselor Widner is the seconder.
As I, I think we can leave it as is. I think we'll, ultimately this will lead to a discussion of the Board of Management. So that's, and that's what's needed.
Uh, Deputy, Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, perhaps to accommodate Counselor Jagar. Uh, would you and would the mover and seconder be uh, amenable to uh, in the last line of the resolution to include the Board of Management and circulation of the reports? That I could consider.
Yes, definitely. Yeah.
No, I don't think you need to read it again. It's just as amended with the, on the final line, on the final line of the report. Yeah. And they're both nodding their head. Yes, they approve.
Excuse me, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
Can you read the resolution again?
Good. Resolved that the report titled Analysis of Consultation Process on the Relocation of the Elmer Library to the East Elgin Community Complex. From the Director of Community and Cultural Services dated July eighth, twenty twenty-five be received and filed. And that Elgin County Council requests a commitment as soon as feasible from the Board of Management. Of the East Elgin Community Complex to accommodate the Elmer branch of the Elgin County Library based on county council's identified space needs. To take effect as soon as January first, twenty twenty-eight. And that county council engage in further discussions with the Board of Management of the East Elgin Community Complex should such a commitment. Be received on matters such as capital renovations and a leasing agreement to accommodate the Elmer branch of the Elgin County Library. And that copies of this report be circulated to the councils of the Town of Elmer and the Township of Malahide. And the Board of Management of the East Elgin Community Complex.
Go ahead.
Just question, I'm not, still not sure. When you say copies of this report, which report are you referring to? This report right here? So the, the amendment that deals with staff preparing a full description for the board has been removed from the resolution. Is that correct? Yes, okay, thank you.
Counselor Jagar, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, that's a good point because I think what the Board of Management needs to receive is a full summary. Uh, so not just this report. This report captures one step. Um. So could it be, would it be a friendly amendment to say that a copy of this report? Yes. And that uh, staff prepare a full summary of all discussions and various resolutions that have. And Counselor Cookett, if that, if. I think that would be more helpful for the Board of Management.
Yeah, well, I would agree with the concept that the Board of Management requires all the information they can get. What I'd like to see maybe is a friendly amendment to your amendment is that. This council approve of the summary report before it goes to the board. Is I'd like to, I'd like council to see what kind of information is being given to the board to make their decision. And uh, I think it's important that the entire board agree um, on the type of information that's given to the board.
Thank you, Warden. Through uh, you to members of, of committee. Um, yes, I think that would be appropriate. Um, and, and with, between Brian and I, I think we can provide. An overview of the steps that have been taken. That report I would clarify with council will be very factual. And factual only. It will outline the uh, direction that council's provided, the actual steps that were taken, the results of the survey. It would be just a summary of what has been already been provided to council. If it's council's desire that that come back for a review of this council prior to be providing to the board. Um, ab- obviously that, that's, you know, more than acceptable and we can do that. That's council's prerogative to, to direct staff to do that. But it would be very, very factual of just the actual steps that were taken, the direction that's been provided on by council at various points in time. Um, there would be no further analysis of what's been provided. It would just be what council has already seen.
Counselor Jagar, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I think that would be a fair uh, friendly amendment. And since we are on committee of the whole and this is going to the next council meeting, I think the summary report, because it would not be new information or new analysis. Could then also go directly to county council for direction, which then would not add a delay, I think, in the process. So. And if the E C C Board of Management uh, itself requires more information from other parties, then that will be their prerogative. For them to request and not for us to anticipate. So, yeah.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Warden. Just to clarify, uh, Counselor Jagar, should the Board of Management require any further information, that request should come back to county council.
See everybody's heads nodding. So you added extra to the resolution, Catherine? You want to read it once more? Or just the amendment on the bottom?
All right, so we have the, the original, um, which includes the receive and file, uh, requesting the, the commitment. Um, engaging in further discussions uh, with the East Elgin Community Complex and circulating copies of the report uh, to Elmer, Malahide and. The East Elgin Community Complex. And then the last part is that staff prepare a summary report of the exploration of the move of the Elmer branch of the Elgin County Library. To the East Elgin Community Complex to be presented to county council at a future date. At the next council.
Mover and seconder agree? Agree? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian and, and Sina. Um, last item, motion to adjourn.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at eleven eleven AM to meet again on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five at nine thirty AM.
Mover and seconder please, Counselor Widner, Counselor Hans, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all.